Thank you. All right, so we'll call the February 3rd, 2025, 6:00 PM FY26 budget hearing to order. And we'll start with this. The school committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner. Even when there is disagreement, we value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Right? I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Burkhead to start us off on this FY26 budget public hearing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Brundelini, and good evening, everyone. Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Brundelini. Good evening, everyone. Sent to be here tonight to discuss our budget for the fiscal year '26. As I've stated many times, I believe the budget is a reflection of your values. And I think even in tough times, what we'll show, try to demonstrate this evening is that this budget reflects our values and is in line with our strategic plan. So before I turn it over to Dr. Rab and our team, I'd like just to read from a prepared statement they had. I read something very similar to last meeting, but I think this being a public hearing, I want this on the record and just kind of summarizes what you'll see in the presentation for this evening. So tonight, we present the proposed FY26 school budget for the upcoming academic year. Although this budget to date represents only 2.34% increase, which is approximately half the money we received last year, I'm proud to report that it does reflect our values of our strategic plan and our unwavering commitment to provide our students with an exceptional education that empowers them to succeed in an ever-changing world. It also avoids teacher-staff layoffs and a potential override for the community, which you've probably seen in some other towns. At the heart of this budget lies a profound appreciation for the dedication and tireless efforts of our incredible educators and support staff. So I just want to pause there. And as you'll see tonight, it's pretty common in most school budgets that 80% or more of your budget is people. And where in the people business, having the best people is important, and I believe we do have that. It's our responsibility to support our educators, which are teachers on the front lines, our professionals, nurses, custodians, bus drivers, secretaries, and our great administrative team that helped prepare this budget very frugally behind me and beside me. So I just want to thank them all from bottom of my heart because that's what makes this district so great. And the good news is that we're able to keep them all with this budget, this presentation this evening, and we're very proud to do that, and that's always the highest priority. This budget also prioritizes competitive salaries and professional development to attract and retain the best educators. And keep in mind this year that we're negotiating six contracts, and we expect to do that in good faith. We expect to do that while maintaining a responsible budget and attracting top-tier educators and keeping them there. Furthermore, this budget places a premium on academic excellence. We will continue to invest in a dynamic and rigorous curriculum that fosters critical thinking, creativity, and problem-solving skills. We will equip our classrooms with the latest instructional resources and technologies. Technology is a big part of this budget, as you'll see. And finally, this budget recognizes the importance of a well-maintained and safe learning environment. We will allocate resources for essential facility upgrades, including upgrades to our technology infrastructure, ensuring that our classrooms are conducive to learning, innovation, and cyber safety. So I urge the school committee tonight, after having your questions heard and any fallout you may have, to approve this final budget when it's ready at our next meeting. We support it wholeheartedly, and we appreciate your feedback from the last meeting. We made some edits. We also want to thank the financial forecast committee, which Dr. Rab will share some updates with that, and the great work of that committee to enhance the budget as well. In conclusion, I would like to thank central office team, our school committee subcommittee, Mr. Gates, Ms. Fenwick, the rest of the committee, obviously, our financial forecast committee, our principals who are here tonight, department chairs and coordinators who are also here tonight, and members of the district leadership team, and our current staff who were able to focus and maintain the values reflected in the strategic plan and also made sacrifices to tighten their belt and keep the budget in line with expectations from our town. And then I would also ask that the town study this budget. We are extremely proud of the transparency. This will be up on our website. We'll continue to ask questions up into, including the town meeting, and look for an affirmative vote when that time comes. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Rab to kick us off.
Thank you very much. So to begin, the budget aligns with our strategic objectives. Do you want to go through those slides first? A minute ago, I had that financial forecast.
I just need to take a breath, so.
So that's fine. I can chat for a while. That's fine.
Okay. So, thank you, Dr. Rab. So I mentioned this a few times, strategic plan. We didn't even practice that. Gotta get you out of breath. So just want to review this because I think this is obviously important. Before we start getting, we're going to see a lot of numbers tonight, obviously, and it's just can't get old alarming for folks. And we wanted to explain what some of these numbers mean. You'll see these later on. This is just kind of a summary. Again, we have our principals here and our central office team to go over some of these. We'll get to these later in the presentation in details, and we're happy to answer any questions. But these are some highlights of how we connect the strategic plan that our community put together through 2028 with our budget. So curriculum instruction assessment, obviously, is huge. It's a very big line item. I chose this one because it's our biggest cost center for this area, and it's our commitment to a plan that we put together for our curriculum, standards in alignment, textbook purchases, resources, training for our staff. And again, we're very proud of that, and we're proud to have kept this. This year, social studies is up. I thought Ms. Lesnick did a really nice job. If you haven't seen it in community, I'll add our last meeting explaining some of the highlights of how that's done and the value we get for our financial investment there. Next, we have the professional development. During the summer, we have professional development, as you see in the documents throughout. We just put summer there because we think that's not very well-known to folks and not all communities can commit to having that summer opportunity for teachers to come in and get some professional development if and when needed. And something we've talked about at great length here is the multi-tiered system of support integration throughout the district, where our third-year gates in 223 and 224, one team piloted it, went extremely well. Gates full implementation this year with Jenkins piloting, and then next year, all K through A. This allows us our focus on the whole child, looking at everyone is a unique individual, which is a part of our mission, and we hold true to that. So you'll see some money spent here. We'll explain that later in the process. But the dashboard is one of those key highlights, which is basically, in short, a one-stop-shop for all our data on each child. Instead of going grabbing it from all different spots, you may have the child's MCAS data, benchmarking, data attendance, all in one spot, which makes it a lot easier for our educators to access it and to get a snapshot of a child without the time and effort that, you know, could be a lot for each child. We're going to do that for every child in our district. So that's a pretty big step, and it's something that we've invested in, got some support from the committee on, and something we'll be happy to discuss as we go through the presentation next time. So next objective in our strategic plan is communicating partnerships and communication. You know, every year, communication is one of our highest priorities because it can, you can have great things going on, but if you can't tell your story, those things could, you know, not be, could be lost in translation or not understood or fully appreciated. So you always can do better at that, so that will always be at the forefront. You know, in looking at other districts, we're looking at potentially down the road this year, maybe having some support for that through a potential position. This year, we may look for it in other areas of outside support and internally to give some, a little reprieve to our technology team, which has been responsible for that along with central office, and just too much we need to be separated. We've committed to doing that. So you'll see that evolve in part of our plan and part of our value system. Once you see the investment we've had this year with Ms. Frangello and our team putting that down and articulating the need for cyber safety and enhancements for our staff and students. Then just the collaboration with the town. I think this can't be stated often enough that the relationships between the town and school are extremely important. They're challenging because it's about money. It's about sharing money. It's about, especially when times get tough. But I think the people in the room at Town Hall, the select board, the town administrator, the finance administrator, I could go on, down the list, there's not a person over there that doesn't have the best interest of schools in mind. And I think they've shown that through their commitment to our budgets. And I'll say the same about the community. It was the reason I was attracted here five years ago is because I went back to all the budgets. I watched a lot of the town meetings and select board and school committee meetings, and I found that pretty consistent commitment financially to the schools. And that has held true my five years here. So I want to just thank everybody that's been part of that. And we just know that we appreciate that, and we count every dollar here and make sure we get our value for it. Then those partnerships that, again, our principals are here, department chairs are here tonight. If there are any questions to dive a little deeper, these project will lead the way, the innovation and career pathways, all the high school, business, and finance, environmental life sciences, all relatively new, coming onboard, but really making a difference at the high school. Holly Hill Farm has always been a partnership for us, but now accepting some internships there and just a really great community partner. And again, the co-host student coastal research is through a grant, but also accepting internships and working closely with the high school there. So those are just some of the partnerships that we have. And again, happy as we go through the, and we have, you see these on our budget. We'd be happy to talk a little bit more detail about that. And finally, finance, facilities, personnel, and technology. There's a lot here. It's extremely important, as obvious as the slide. So again, something that we're committed to, that I think we've seen great success for, something unique to our district, is our commitment to maintaining our excellent facilities. And I think that having that $250,000 line item and protecting it allows us to take care of our schools and improve them in many cases. I can just think of the new nurse, new nurse's suite at Wampeeta. Just night and day with how our nurse can access children and the ability for our students and staff to access the nurse, it just makes a huge difference. So those things, if not, you know, finance in all kinds of ways, but a lot of that comes from the maintenance and commitment to facilities. So again, that's a great thing. Our capital budget is also, I know it's not this, this is the operating budget, but I also want to give a shout out to our capital planning processes in our budget there because that money used wisely in combination with the maintenance on the day-to-day has allowed us to keep our buildings in excellent shape, a lot better than they were five years ago. Staff, I mentioned them already. I can't say enough about that. You know, I just wanted, you know, right when we got the budget up, we heard it was tight, we, we circled the wagon, said, how are we going to keep all our staff? How are we going to maintain staffing levels to support student learning? And I think we've achieved that in this budget. And technology, cybersecurity is a huge one. You'll hear a little bit about that tonight. But keeping our school safe, access to our technology safe is a huge undertaking and is expensive. So we want to make sure we do that in a smart manner through a cybersecurity plan and through many grants, which our school district has the blessing of having many. Home book refresh, you're familiar with this, but now we were committing to having those starting, since we inserted the program a few years back, the one-to-one program for each child. We need to replace those in grade five and grade nine, so that needs to be in the budget every year and anticipated ahead of time. Interactive panels are similar to what you see here. The overhead projectors are a little outdated now, and the interactive panels are much more user-friendly for teachers and better for kids. So I think, again, the technology department has done a really good job at already starting to include those in our ordering, and then they'll continue to make that commitment throughout so that we don't get one big order where we have to replace everything. So technology is hand-in-hand with our facilities plan. And then the updated firewall is, probably could go under the cybersecurity, keeping our internet and email and all that kind of stuff safe. And includes, this also includes training for our staff, which is relatively new, cybersecurity training, very important to protect everything we have for technology. And all the information that we contain is highly confidential.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhead. So this slide deck is a lot more comprehensive than last week's. So as we go through it, there are a lot of numbers, there's a lot of information. It's organized by department and organized by building. The one thing I would ask the committee, if it's okay, is don't hesitate to interrupt after an individual slide. It's easier to have some of those discussions along the way than to wait until the end and then have to go back five or 10 slides. So, you know, I'll try to pause at the end of each slide, but don't hesitate to interrupt if there are questions. I'm not sure if that works.
Tom, could you just do me a favor? Could you go to the presentation view on this? Just so it's a little bit bigger?
I think somebody will show me how.
I think view with upper left there.
View.
View, it should be, it should be an option for presentation view.
Just go to 100%. So you were saying 50%. Yeah, go to 200. You can go.
Like go to full screen with that, too?
Yeah, you hit the, you hit the plus side.
Nope. Okay, maybe it's late.
It's full screen on my computer, but I lost my sharing. Let me see if this works.
If you just hit the plus side, it'll make it bigger.
Let me try that. Let me reshare it.
As I mentioned earlier, why we wait, the technology training for central office personnel as well.
Go ahead.
Yep. There you go.
Better. And I'll scroll on to the bigger one.
Yeah, that's, yes, Tom.
That was your first test.
Thank you. So as I was saying, this, this presentation is a lot more comprehensive than the one last week. I did put last week's online, but after tonight, I'll put this one online as well for any member of the community. So we've talked a lot about belt tightening. We've talked a lot about the fact that, you know, this budget was about half of what we received last year. We did receive some good news. So on Tuesday, right after our meeting last week, the financial foreign forecast committee met to consider some additional revenue from state aid. Every year, at the end of January, we do receive some additional money from state aid. And then we also considered any other changes that might have happened between October and last week. So in addition to adding the increased state aid, Mrs. Holt also moved almost $50,000 in our bus lease expenses and $39,000 toward tuition and transportation for a Norfolk Aggie student into the town side of the budget. That helps us out because we were paying those expenses out of our budget, and now they're a shared cost with the town, and that allows them to become part of the overall shared costs. As well, South Shore Vocational Technical High School lowered its estimated costs by about $93,000 based on some debt restructuring that they did. So all in all, it allows for an additional $210,217 to our budget from what I presented last week. So while I'm still going to say we're belt tightening, maybe we released it about one notch. And basically, I'm, and I know this is the first time the committee's seeing this, but the $210,000 really is putting back some of the more severe cuts that we did, frankly, in my opinion. But I'm open to suggestions, and we can certainly make any additions or modifications between now and next week on how to spend the $210,000. But just to go through the list, I spoke to the fact last week that I always like to have an additional position in the budget for any number of unexplained things that could happen. Usually, it's kindergarten enrollment. We got 220 kindergarteners enrolled this year. You know, we may have the same number next year. We may have more. It's an unpredictable number, and so we do like to keep our kindergarten class sizes at 18 to 20, just like all the others. And so I put that in there. And also, as we talked about volatile expenses in special education, it's always helpful to have extra money. So I'm not adding an FTE to our budget. I'm just putting that $75,000 in the salary line so that we have it available to us if we do need to add a position. If we don't, then we can always just consider how to spend it. But it's an opportunity that I had to remove from the budget, and it was one of the first things that kind of pained me as I reviewed it, because I know inevitably, things happen between now and May, and we're going to need a little bit of wiggle room in a tight budget. The two areas that I also felt very strongly about restoring are at Wampeeta and Jenkins. You might remember in this year's budget, there's a $35,000 line item for replacement desks and chairs. Both of those buildings have old student desks and chairs, and they started in the fifth grade, working their way down, replacing those desks and chairs. So I had lowered that to $10,000 at each of those budgets. This allows me to put it back to $35,000. So 25 and 10 is 35 in each building, and that will allow the principals to continue the work that they began this year. The one area that we did talk about where there was some belt tightening was in curriculum in general. And so while the additional $18,000 doesn't put us back to exactly what we had last year in the curriculum line, it gets us pretty close. And I put it in a line called curriculum revisions because I think that's what we can utilize and invest for the social studies curriculum that we talked about last week, as well as any additional math curriculum work that needs to happen. We talked about, last week, I added $40,000 to the generator repair line. That wasn't added in a prior budget, but we have been overspending that line each of the last three or four years, particularly this cold winter. We're on track to overspend. And so an additional $40,000 would allow us to keep pace with the actual from the last few years. And again, I think we've seen in all the schools, power can go out. We have those generators to back up, and we did a lot of work this year to make sure they were running in the cold weather, and you need them when you need them, and this is what we've been able to maintain. It goes toward Mr. Burkhead's comments earlier about building maintenance. Having these funds available allows us to make sure that we're not closing buildings unnecessarily, that we're not in a situation where it's a crisis if the power goes out. And finally, we added to contracted services. There's a line that already exists in the budget for contracted services in central office. I added $27,150 for contracted services for communications. This isn't hiring an additional staff member, but what it is doing is it will allow us to hire some hours for communications, and it will allow us to, again, as Mr. Burkhead mentioned earlier, relieve some of this burden on our technology department, who is right now doing all of our communications for us. That's a lot for a tech director and a technology department of four to be due with all of that as well. So this isn't the entire solution to this problem, but it's a step in the right direction. So I'm happy to take any questions on this list or any comments on this list.
Well, I think to the point about the contract for the communications, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like we've had a contracted person for communications in the past, and I don't know that it was ideal. There were, I just, we've taught, a couple of us, when we're able to, two of us have had conversations about how an external person, it often doesn't necessarily reduce the amount of work because you're having to explain the whole situation because they're outside. And so I'm just wondering what the district is thinking about long-term, given that communication is one of our important pieces. I mean, are we thinking about a full-time position eventually? Or like, just wondering, I don't know if that was just a question.
Sure, I can answer that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think it's a great question, and I don't disagree. The last person we had was for a specific purpose, was to create a new website. Terrible website, outdated, and that person came in and helped build the new website, the app that went with it, how to send our information. But then it was handed off, and even during that person, like you said, our tech team, our very small technology department was handling lion's share of that. They were all trained to do it, and now we've got so much other stuff to do, this has been squeezed out. So I, I think we have to do this, and I agree with you that it's a piecemeal plan, that's working the end game and coming backwards. Many districts have now, under different names, communications director, communications and community engagement, whatever it might be, have this position full-time, and I think it would be a worthy investment, and I think we certainly could, you know, make a case for it. We just didn't think the money was there for the full-time this time. So this, this money, before we spend it, certainly something I'd like to communicate with the school committee on. We spoke to a communications expert, Chris Moran, that some of the community may know. I know several of you on the school committee know. He came and met with Brundelini and I and Ms. Frangello, just to let us, you know, talk about it and our frustrations and what we thought were going well. You know, afterwards, he says, yeah, it shouldn't be in technology, right away. I picked that off, and he says, you need, you need a full-time person, just all that you want to do, social media, you know, responding to things, sending out stuff. Need a full-time person. Saying that and understanding our budget situation, you know, might be a year away, he suggested that there are people out there that could come in, but what we have to do is kind of, you know, do a needs assessment. We talked about survey community, and then have some focused goals, some low-hanging fruit that we could pick off between now and next year, and have this person fulfill that role. So we'd have to develop them before we brought someone here.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom, I just have a quick question on the contracted services of $40,000. I'm not sure it matters, but does it matter if it goes towards contracted services or the actual cost of the utility? I'm just seeing here that the utilities, we budgeted less in utilities for next year than we did for the past year, and I didn't know if the pricing is, that's a contract that we're locked into a certain price, because I know that residentially, prices of those things are going up. So I just was curious if it'd be more appropriate to move that $40,000 to the actual utility or keeping the contract services?
I thought about that carefully. We're actually locked in with our electricity costs for the next three years, so we do have a discounted rate of electricity. Gas, we haven't seen going up that much, so it's been pretty consistent. I put it in contract services more for transparency because it is what we call CBS Marshall Oil, the system, so we call it, other company to come in or a company to come and service our generators. We're paying that company to come in and service the generators as opposed to the gas bill of the electricity. So it could go either way, but contracted services, a little more transparent.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm happy to see some more money in the curriculum revisions line. I think we've, we've learned a lot about what it takes really fully to implement something. It's not just, you know, you purchase it, you're done. Clearly, there's follow-up. I just wanted to put out a hope that we can also carve out a little more somewhere for a focus more on writing. We've heard that the new reading curriculum has taken obviously a long time to implement. There's a lot of moving pieces. Writing is one of them. We've heard that time is a barrier sometimes to getting teachers together, and so I just think that's something maybe we should be thinking about. You know, can we set up some special PDs, which are any books, whatever it is that the teachers need, just to create some work?
No, thanks, ma'am. And I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I do, I'll go back into the actual building lines for reading and so, and also for ELA, and see what's there to, and maybe get a finer point on exactly how those money is spent.
Let's take a quick question about kindergarten enrollment. You said 210 enrolled for next year, is that?
Currently, not yet, no. We currently have 226. We're not sure what next year is yet.
Oh, okay.
It's still up.
Still in the cylinder. Okay. Yes. I don't know where.
I apologize if I was unclear. We currently have a total amount.
Did I just make that up? Well, there's an enrollment. A lot of numbered slides in my hair.
The enrollment slide, I believe, well, we'll get there in a moment, but the current day enrollment is 226.
Okay.
I only know because I said it on the announcement today.
Yes. I should have.
Validize it. You should have watched me, you would have known.
I should have watched. I'll watch the, yeah. Watch the rerun.
Yeah.
All right. And when you said in this, just to clarify, I think you clarified my question, but just in case anyone sees it in public, when I first read Restore Jenkins Building Admin, I thought it was administrator or like some kind of administrative.
Yeah.
Just of what you didn't say, that that is now specifically the, the desks and chairs that are worn out, but just.
I can add the word expense. Yeah. It's literally the title of the line, but you're correct.
Yeah, that was my question. It's like, I didn't know that we had cut some. I think that that happened ever under all of our watches, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anytime I can make this better and more transparent, it's helpful. So let's just, so this is what we added to the budget that we presented last week. All the slides now incorporate this $210,000 as presented. So we can certainly talk about it and make any changes, but right now, the rest of the presentation incorporates that 210 scattered throughout the budget in whatever line is appropriate. So if we look at our revenue, this is the same model I just updated for the meeting on January 28th. So you'll notice our FY26 school budget is 48.3 million and on the town side, 24.5. The important thing to notice here is that we continue our commitment toward also helping the town of it. We've had a longstanding arrangement in town where the schools receive 2/3 of any additional revenue and the town receives 1/3 of any additional revenue. And you'll note that, you know, anytime you do that, 33%, 66%, it's up to 99%, there's always that 1% and how do you apportion that 1%. And last year... And last year, we actually flipped it, so the schools got a third of that, and the town got two-thirds of that one percent to try to help out the town a little bit. We maintained that commitment in the financial forecast for FY twenty-six. And I think that's important information, you know, we're all working together, we're working on the same team. And we did maintain that commitment. So that explains in gray there to the left, how the share changed in twenty-five, twenty-six. So if we look at our revenue projections, again, as I mentioned, I incorporated all of the revenue, and I incorporated those expenses as well. I didn't change from last week any of the revolving account projections, so they're all the same. They're adjusted for actuals for our federal grants, Title I, Title II A, and Title IV, as well as the IDEA, IDEA grant. There's been a lot of discussion about federal grants, none of these are threatened by that discussion. Let me just say that, just put it out there, okay? I understand that's a, that's a evolving discussion, but right now, none of those entitlement grants are threatened. And they weren't before, so I'm not really anticipating any changes in those areas. And, and like I mentioned last week, I did include some revenue from the PAC. We are starting to see some revenue from the PAC, and I included that in our revenue projections as well. So again, you know, this slide's important because it shows that not only are we grateful for the forty-eight point three million dollars from the town, but we're also supported by four point two million dollars in grants and revenue, grants and revolving fund revenue that make up the total budget. And I think that's important. I think sometimes we forget that, you know, I represent every salary, every expense in the budget. That adds up to fifty-two million dollars, and we have to remember that that's also four million dollars of grants and revolving. So I'm happy to take any questions on revenue before I talk about enrollment.
Just a quick question, I don't know if anyone would need to know this answer right now, but maybe. With MECO, just curious, obviously that's, they receive any federal funding? Is there any kind of channeling through federal, or is it all Massachusetts-based?
I believe it's Massachusetts-based, but I don't, don't vote me. I don't know for sure. The increase was given to us by MECO, so I'm not speculating on that.
Yeah.
That no one's seen.
Right. So a point of clarification there, so nothing comes out of, that's not part of our operating budget. MECO and all of these listed here are part of grants that we receive out of federal or state resources.
And they support either things like special education tuitions, or they may support related services. They support our MECO director and visionary and those positions related to MECO. Particularly, MECO supports those positions as well as the transportation. So those are the primary drivers. So if we look at our enrollment, and I've got a couple of different slides about enrollment. These come right from the Department of Education website. So these are the October one enrollments, anybody who goes on the DVS website, this, this is what you can find. Our enrollment has been pretty flat over the last couple of years, and it's projected to be flat with a little bit of an increase, and I'll show you that in a moment. But if you look at our total enrollment from last year, twenty-three, twenty-four, on October first, it was twenty-seven, forty-five. And then if you look at this current year, it's twenty-seven, forty-four, so that's relatively flat enrollment. We're not seeing a lot of shifts. There might be shifts among buildings and shifts among grade levels. Like I said, we saw more kindergarten students. And we have increasing enrollment at the middle school as those kids are moving into the middle school. So we've had to make adjustments among buildings and grade levels. But overall, our enrollment's the same, which is why we can maintain the same number of FTEs from one year to the next. Like I said, the only real volatile part of that is in kindergarten. And we have, now, we're grateful to be able to have that additional position if we do need it. So we partner with a firm called TESDEP, the New England School Development Council, and they do enrollment projections for the next ten years. And it's, I forgot to, this slide. It's in your, it's in your printed, printed presentation, I'll make sure it gets online. But if you look at your printed presentation, there's a grades eight to twelve projected enrollment. And if you see right in the presentation there, they do not include preschool in their projected enrollments, but you'll see the graph there goes from twenty-four to twenty-five all the way up to twenty-thirty-four, twenty-thirty-five. So it looks out for the next ten years. I don't know why the particular graph didn't make it from the PowerPoint to the PDF, but I'll make sure it gets up there, even if I have to put it separately online. But it shows that our, not including preschool, so you do have to discount the eighty, eighty-five kids in preschool right now. You know, they predicted twenty-six, seventy-one, not including preschool. If you were to add the preschoolers in, you'd be at twenty-seven, fifty-three this year, and we were at twenty-seven, forty-four. So their predictions are pretty good, you know, when you, when you think about, they're looking out over, over several years. And they're projecting our enrollment to grow over the next ten years from twenty-six, seventy-one, not including preschool, to twenty-nine, ninety-six. So another two or three hundred students over the next ten years. So if anything, you know, we might have seen a little bit of a dip in enrollment over the past several years. Now we're starting to see that trend reverse. And it's allowing us to be very confident in our FTE predictions and not have to add staff. All the principals know that moving staff around to accommodate any enrollment spikes at a grade level. But in general, our enrollment is flat right now and projected to be flat.
So enrollment is on an upward trajectory for the foreseeable future, even if it's just a little bit, but it's a steady con increase. I can't say it enough, I'm constantly hearing.
Unfortunately, there's a, there's a.
Ridiculous things.
Unfortunately, there's a narrative out there that our enrollment is going down, and I don't, the numbers don't.
So sick of it.
Yeah.
No, the numbers do not.
Just looks like there's a cluster of low enrollment for like the high school, but then after, like after.
It's like a teeny grade.
Yeah, below seventh, below eighth grade, every, the numbers are much higher. It's like nine, ten, eleven will be smaller.
Agreed, and, and they're going to come to the high school eventually. And I think, you know, what I've known, just in my career, and I have often referenced the fact that I've been doing this for thirty-one years and things like that. But what, what I generally have found is that sometimes it's better to write some of these things out. If you make too many serious corrections, it's hard to fix it two or three years from now. So it's better to write it out, do what you need to do. We're not adding staff, we're maintaining our staff, and I think that's an important part of it.
I mean, overall, it really just, it's stable, which is, is good for teaching and staff.
And I'd also add that our commitment to small class size, like the elementary school, especially K through two, but that's a real strength of this district, that's something we should all be proud of, so that remains consistent.
I mean, how about the other way too, where there's like random giant ones?
Yeah, yeah, the same thing happens.
It was about the high school.
Even seventh and eighth grade, that dropped, dropped over there.
Just.
Yeah.
So these are the same slides that I showed you last week. I adjusted them for the two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And even with those adjustments, there really aren't many changes. These are what you'd expect, you know, high school and Gates. High school is eighteen percent of the budget, Gates is sixteen percent of the budget, you know, Wampe Tuck and so forth. So this just, it's just an interesting graphic to see that most of our funding goes toward instruction. And I think that's the key part of, when I, when I look at this, my takeaway is, you know, our funding is going toward instruction, which is where it should go. And the salaries versus expenses, making those adjustments for the additional funding with the player-to-be-named layer, as well as the other expenses, really didn't change these percentages much. So we have seventy-nine point one percent salaries, and then the rest between added district tuitions and expenses. Eighty percent salaries is kind of our metric, and we're talking about what do we think an appropriate staffing level is. And so we've tried to maintain that metric as we kind of go through this. So it works itself out, but this has all been adjusted. And then similarly, for regular education and special education, twenty-eight and seventy-one. So again, just to show in broad terms how the overall budget is being spread out. And then if you look at the summary, and this might be a little bit small, but basically this looks at the different buildings, and like I mentioned, we do have a commitment to not calling out anybody's individual salary. And so I blanked out anywhere where as a teacher, administrator, anybody where the individual salary could be revealed, I blanked that out, but certainly it's incorporated. And you'll see here, again, those are the numbers behind what you just saw in those graphs. And again, our commitment to instruction, you can see where the seven-figure numbers are. They're instruction and general education, which again, is what, what you'd expect to see. In special education, at the bottom there, million dollars, you know, that's OT, PT, speech, DCBA's, team leaders, all of those people that are, in addition to the instructional, special education instructional staff, that make that program strong. And then the rest of the expenses, our central, our central office, as well as athletics, technology, the early childhood center. I do break out separately from Wampe Tuck, just for the sake of this graph, and then transportation. And one of the things I noted last week, which I think is very important to note, is because we do our own transportation, both in regular ed and special education, we are saving money. A lot of districts that do contract it out for all of their regular ed transportation and special education transportation are spending a lot more than we are. And so we do have some contracted special education transportation, but with the vans and being able to keep our vans current, we've been able to do a lot of work that's much less expensive than having to hire an added district contract. So there is money available for both. But overall, to have a regular ed transportation of one point one million, and then a special education transportation, I think it was five thirty-five on the prior slide, there's many districts of this size where their regular ed transportation budget's that size, and that's better than. So I think we do a very good job with our transportation.
Tom, for the central office, the supplies, custodial, and then contracted services, and then curriculum supplies, contracted services, are there different types of contractual services, is that why it's in a different?
Yes.
Okay.
So later on, actually, the budget book is broken up by line.
Okay.
But later on, we'll see the three point two million dollars actually broken out into individual items. That's part of where the communications person we were talking about before, and any other contracted services consultant that we use.
So what kind of contracted services would be in the curriculum column that's there?
There'll be bringing in a, somebody or an consultant or.
Specifically for curriculum?
For curriculum, or bringing in somebody to teach classes, PD, anything along those lines.
Thank you.
Just one more quick question, rentals under athletics there, is that the ice time?
Yes, I remember, yes. Ice could be swimming time too, you know, but any, any rental.
Yeah, not just the.
Not.
Ice date, it's not just the ice?
No, we also rent for swimming or any other facility that we need to. I don't remember. I, I want to say it leveled off, I don't think it's gone up a lot, but it went up a lot last year.
I knew it had gone up significantly last year, so.
It did. I think it's leveled off, but I don't want to say for sure.
Yeah.
I'm budgeting it leveled off.
I think Mr. Payne told us that. That our ice tend to not go up, as had in the past, because of our relationship, business.
Yeah.
I think they change ownership so much, whenever a new owner comes in, the first thing they do is jack up prices. So it's, it's had the same ownership, I think, for a few years now, just felt this kind of, built that relationship and commitment.
I will say he's very aware of that, and so they'll shop around different ice ramps and things like that to make sure the most, you know, getting with them. So here we are for athletics, so I did, I did keep it flat. Basically, I'm only budgeting for contractual increases. And this actually is a good time for me to say this. The, within this budget, Mr. Burkett mentioned, we're negotiating with six unions during, right now, which means I can't be very specific about individual raises for unions or exactly what that might mean, because all I can say is that there's sufficient funds for the committee to negotiate successfully. And I think that's, you know, important to know. In prior years, I would have been a lot more specific about where those raises were applied and how much was a, you know, step raise as opposed to different kinds of increases. Unfortunately, it would compromise the negotiating, negotiating stance in the committee if I were to say more. In this case, I just went through all of the coaching lines and just put an increase that I thought would help us get the negotiations. Having also said that, it's not set in stone, because we are negotiating. So any number of these numbers can change as long as we don't go above that fifty-two point one. So let me talk a little bit about the detail slide. So these slides are a little more detailed than we looked at last week. So this is the slide you looked at last week. In a moment, you're going to see a much more detailed one for Cushing. So last week, I boiled it down to just general education, special education, parents and custodians. Basically by bargaining unit, just to show in general our commitment toward instruction. And then we looked at the supply number for Cushing, that didn't change as a result of the financial forecast. But if you look at the next slide, this breaks it down. And I think the important part of this slide for all of the buildings just shows our commitment to not only instruction in the classroom, but our commitment to specialists. Every one of the schools, you'll see a component of art teacher. You know, at each elementary school is point eight art teacher four days a week. Music teachers, that says one point three, so there's several music teachers. Some of them are one day a week, some of them are two days a week. I tried to capture that, you know, just a general term in terms of music teachers. So that's one point three, that's not even just two people, that's several people working part-time. But all in all, we have full-time music teachers, they just are spread out among the buildings. So to make it fair to each building, I tried to capture the FTEs. Each elementary school has a phys ed teacher, has reading specialists, has counselors, has a nurse, a school psychologist, special education staff to accommodate those students, as well as a speech and language pathologist, that's what SLP stands for, as well as paraprofessional and custodian, secretary of admin. The other talking point on this slide, and you'll see it through each of the schools, is that our FTEs are remaining the same from FY twenty-five to twenty-six. And that is, for some reason, there's an extra column in there for twenty-five. I don't know why there's two purple columns in there. But regardless, it's still fifty point two going from twenty-five and fifty point two FTEs going to twenty-six.
I know, I know we're doing, you know, belt tightening, and which I appreciate. I guess I'm curious again, similar to the communications question, what's the rationale on not having a whole FTE art teacher?
I don't know the whole history there. I think, right, and again, anyone in the elementary principals want to jump in, but my understanding is four days a week covers what they need to cover right now. If I'm wrong, feel free to jump in.
I just, I just asked about why we only have a point eight FTE for art and the others are one point zero or higher.
Yeah, I believe that's the case. I certainly haven't been here the longest, but I do know that with our kindergarten groups, they do have art multiple times a week as well. So thinking about, you know, kind of that, that need, and certainly I don't think the one point oh would cover, you know, the entire building. Meaning, right now, the point eight FTE, we're able to get all of our sections in at Cushing, plus having the kindergartens have a, have an additional block as well.
I think.
And news, our phys ed also teaches help.
Okay.
Right?
So there's additional, okay, I mixed it up.
And music helps with the chorus and the.
Okay, thank you.
So art, like just you said, even a point eight, they can, they can meet all classrooms. Maybe I have two or three extra.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
I have a question too. I was just curious about the shared tech teacher. We, we have that, right, that this person shared across all schools.
It's in the district, it's in the district.
I see, in the tech departments, I remember right now?
It is, yeah. It's listed, it's in the tech department. Exactly how many hours at each school, I don't know if you're talking about that, but it is in the tech department budget.
I think that's another position we've discussed before, wanting to eventually get to a place where we can have more of that. You know, I think it's one of those times when, when we want to set that foundation for science and technology. You know, I think it's just a really important thing to think about going forward. I know it's something you guys are sure as well, as a future.
Typing.
Typing, but also, yeah, so much. It's just the foundation, you know, when I get to high school, it's like, we want them to all have experienced that, you know? So, yeah, that's on my list.
It is tough, when one teacher splits, when all elementarys.
But it's. It's also that it's only third and fourth grade too. It's not even like, you know.
Yeah, you had to make a decision on using experience.
Right, right. I mean, it would be nice even to expand it, you know, upper elementary, like fifth grade, yeah.
Well, and I also think it's similar to, you know, Sam gave a great presentation the last time about, you know, the curriculum and how they're doing some PD this spring. So I think tech is similar in that we should be thinking about it as a, it's a comprehensive approach. It's not just being a one-to-one district. It's also providing them with the education to use the one-to-one Chromebooks that we give. It's also providing them with the education to use the one-to-one Chromebooks that we give them. So it's more than just handing out the, I don't know, I just think we need more personnel in that area.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, with AI, with all we need, the digital literacy stuff, it's just, that's just so much that wasn't there even two years ago, you know? So I just feel like that's something that, you know, I would love to see.
Well, to Principal Reader's point, you know, maybe the tech teacher could be not just this piece, but also the AI or so, right? Like it becomes like a dual sort of thing that you have support.
And library presents an opportunity too.
Yeah, true.
Now that we have a pretty high-functioning technology team,
Yeah.
we, we can come up with that rationale for another teacher and why and where, how we're looking at those larger plans.
I think that would be great.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
So you're Sorry, no, I'm keeping running wish lists. But the, the important thing here, I tried to make these slides so that they look similar from building to building. So you'll see the same kind of categories in each building, just a portion to enrollment in that building. The other piece of this that was not in last week's presentation that I wanted to articulate tonight was the expenses for each building. So we'll look at Cushing as an example, but every one of the buildings is inherent as well. And I apologize, this is tiny. But it is in your, it's fine, it is in your, it is in your I can't, yeah. I also tried to give a little bit of history as well. One of, one of the tough parts is how much to kind of put in one slide. But, you know, I went back to 22, just to try to give some history of the actuals. And then, I'm trying to move it over now. The sharing doesn't let me do that very easily. Let me make it a little smaller, just so we can look at the difference. Okay. So most of these didn't change. I mean, part of the belt tightening is simply that, that, you know, we get to a point where expenses, we had to make some sacrifices to make sure we maintain our expenses. And you'll see here at the bottom of the page, and I think I mentioned this last year, I really appreciate, I really appreciate the thought and care that the department heads put into putting their budgets together. So, you know, you look at mathematics supply, mathematics text, you know, music equipment, all of these different things, you see a little bit up, a little bit down. At the end of the day, it was pretty much a wash, or maybe a little bit lower, a little bit higher. But I think we've built a very strong culture with our department heads that they can trust, that if they put something down for next year, it's not cut forever. If they need it back next year, we're going to consider that. And they work together to make sure that what they need is on here in any given year, depending on the priority for that year. I did try in the notes to show some of the things that are spent with those funds. And so again, there's a, they're all in alphabetical order for each building. So I tried to make the presentation consistent so that you could see in each building, we have the same lines. There's a mathematics text, mathematics supply, or whatever it is in each building. And I simply put them in alphabetical order so that they'd be easy to find. But Cushing is a good example, and you'll see in each building kind of any ups and downs from, from one to the next. Having a hard time advancing the slides now that it's There we go. So again, for Hafley, this is the summary slide that I showed last week. And then for the details for Hafley, again, our commitment to instruction, kindergarten, you'll see Hafley in 25 is where we did add that player to be named later that we had in 25. So you'll see from FY 24 to 25, we added a kindergarten staff member there. That's how that works. And so you'll see, you know, we were able to add that from, from 24 to 25, which is the main reason for that increase. And then we're expecting to maintain those three kindergarten teachers that happen next year as well. But again, same teachers, same staffing, music teacher, again, Hafley's a little bit smaller, so it's not quite the same number of music teachers. But you do have health and phys ed. Again, every building committed to having reading specialists, counseling, nurse, school psychologists, the special education teachers needed. They're more at Hafley because there's a specialized program at Hafley, as well as the speech language pathologist, Paris. So again, these slides basically let us know that our elementary schools are staffed appropriately and equitably. That makes any sense? So again, similar to Cushing, most of the generalized building expenses are the same. You'll see in art, we added $200. Tried to keep things consistent. In Hafley, the expenses probably were a little bit underfunded last year. And so we did add, overall, I think it was about, we added $5,000 overall in Hafley. But again, the idea is to make sure that things are spread out equitably and that the departments have what they need and the teachers have what they need in the classroom. This is above and beyond the curriculum budget that we talked about earlier. So that 400,000 can change, it's a completely separate budget. Sure.
We had some previous discussions as related to science and MCA's, you know, fourth, fifth, specifically fifth grade and that. Is that an area that's been invested in now since those conversations? Would that, we see science bundle, bundle digital texts revealing?
Let me, I want to say yes, but certainly I missed the, the step to a thick comment on that. It's not weird. Sure.
Hi Heather. Hi, there's a question up here about art. Sorry, I was going to repeat it because they can't really hear.
Okay, well, I apologize.
I was curious.
No worries. There's just a question about the investment in elementary science and STEM. And if you want, you could talk a little bit more about the curriculum request, that'd be great.
I don't exactly remember the number, but I know it looks pretty big for four or five, because that's the hands-on materials that we need. So we have the text, it's online, but the hands-on stuff we can't reuse.
And is this an additional investment in that area of focus?
It's the same that we had this year. So it's the same, I mean, other than the cost has increased a little bit, it's the same as this year. So it's the same hands-on materials, the kits that we received from Rahel. But yeah, pushing teachers to really dig in, get the kids in groups, learning through touching feelings and using it. Yeah, that's our question. Thank you.
And Heather has, is going on a fact-finding mission to open SciEd to look at their, their proposal and maybe potentially grabbing a teacher too to take them. They start small, so there's energy to continue to invest in what's there, but also to keep looking for things that are going to move us forward. So it's not really a budgetary thing, but it's work that's happening as well.
I was not telling people all, so we'll dig in and do the three-day workshop, that sounds good?
Thank you.
And I do think it's a good time to add, as much as we did do some belt tightening, as I was reviewing all of the department budgets and the department head budgets, I tried to focus on particular curriculum needs and where we could fund them, we did. So, you know, that was the area where I belt tightened, it was in central administration, it was much more. So, you know, I did what I had to do. But I made sure
I'm sure they're okay with it.
But I made sure that the department heads had what they needed. Because at the end of the day, it's short money with big management.
Right. Can you actually speak a little bit more to that on what departments, like, if you could, just a little bit more of where you did sort of strategically not belt tighten and rather sort of like double down actually on investment, like science sounds like one.
Sure. Any, basically anywhere a department had asked me to, you know, if it was, if it was only $2,000 or $3,000 increase, I did my best to try to find it. You know, not that it's, you know, every penny counts, but just to really, you know, honor those investments. Because they, what you don't see here is the seven or eight pages of research that they did to back up that number.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I have quotes, I have all of the research that they did to back that number up. So they just arbitrarily cut it by $1,000, it's tough because that is, they can't order what they want in a way, you know? So that's really the decision-making that went into that, you know, where some of the other rounder numbers, you know, we can, we can look at, we'll look carefully. But even in some of the, the, the lower ones, like, you know, social studies supplier, social studies text there that went down a bit, that department head was honest that at macro level, they had what they needed. And so we were able to use it for the other subjects. And I think that's that cultural information that's important. Not everybody would give up those funds or, you know? But I trust that when they ask for more, they need it, and when they ask for less, they can put it out. That makes any sense? Since I can't see any of them, they're all nodding their heads, we're just
They can't hear.
That's okay.
Mom just said you're all wonderful.
Do you have a question?
No, I was just wondering why they can't hear. If we could make it so they could hear.
I tried to make it sound like earlier, I was doing a really bad job.
It's a bummer you have to sit here and you can't even hear what you're sitting here.
Yeah.
They don't even know we're saying that.
Maybe we should speak up.
Just waving.
We feel bad that you can't hear us, but you have to sit here anyway.
So moving on to Jenkins. Again, these are the same, I don't want to belabor, but I'm willing to read everything but one of these lines. But basically, as we go through this, it really speaks to the equity. I think one of the things that I've enjoyed again in my brief time in Central, this is only my second year, is the equity among the four elementary schools. And I know that's been hard for, over time. And so I recognize that, and I take no credit for it, other than to represent it in numbers. But it's, it's there. And I think it's something that anybody coming in from the outside will see immediately, looking at the budget, is that there's an equitable distribution. That doesn't mean equal, but it's equitable distribution among four elementary schools based on enrollment, based on needs. And I think, you know, we've been very careful to make sure that those needs are met. This is the overall number that we saw last week. And then if we go to the bigger list for Jenkins, remember there is a special education program, a JAMES program at Jenkins as well, which increases the special education staff, as well as the needs of the related service providers. But you'll see here, same distribution, art, music, phys ed, and health, reading, counseling, nurse. The buildings have what they need. You'll see over time, if you look, you know, paraprofessionals is one of those areas that kind of goes up and down from year to year based on the needs of the kids, and I think Jenkins is a good example of that. You know, if you look at the parallel line back in 2023, you know, there were 17, and then 24 was 14.8, up to 16.8 this year, based on solely the needs of the students. And so we're able to maintain that for next year. So I think again, it shows our commitment to the elementary schools and a commitment to making sure that they have the resources that they need. But this is laid out exactly the same from one school to the next. And then looking at Jenkins expenses, this is where you can see that I put back the, well, I left it there, the $35,000 for building admin, new equipment. So if you look toward the top of the page, you'll see where this building admin, new equipment, I maintained that $35,000 in the prior slide, that ended below at $10,000. So it looks like no change, but it's an increase because last week it wasn't there, so. But again, same type of deal in terms of science and so science and social studies, the increased commitment to science and, you know, social studies being honest, they're what they needed from one year to the next. I think, you know, social studies also, we've talked about the textbook adoption at the six to 12. So there's definitely a commitment there. Sure.
I think what's also unique and excellent, that the school committee had recommended it a few times a year back, is the it's a third lineup there, the putting funds in for field trips for children that may not be able to afford them, because we do thrive on, on having field trips where they're educational, create authentic learning experiences. We want to make sure that, that money's not, you know, preventing anybody from going. So we, you know, we were able to keep that too, and I think that's important.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's great.
So overall, Jenkins went up just a little bit. So again, same thing with Wamper Tuck. This is the summary that we looked at, that we looked at last week. And then same at Wamper Tuck, our commitment to making sure that there's equitable distribution. And again, 56.6 FTEs, this does not include ECC, that's on a separate line. So you'll see some corrections, particularly around parish. You might notice that 12.8 to 17, Paris this year, that was a correction. You'll see ECC went down. There was just, they weren't in the right categories. So I corrected it on this slide, and then it will be followed, it's corrected at 1.26. Similar to Jenkins, I maintained the 35,000, $35,000 line for Wamper Tuck for building equipment so that they can keep getting new chairs and student desks. And then here's the early childhood center, that staffing hasn't changed. Itches down a little bit because of that reclassification of some paraprofessionals. And so really, that's the main difference there, as well as a new hire for SLP, which was just holding plus. So again, same staff for the early childhood center, but overall, the budget number went down just a little bit. And then we look at Gates, similar to last time. And again, the Gates expenses went up $33,000, if you look at the bottom of the page. And that, like I mentioned last week, is a correction in terms of how I portioned the social studies textbook money. Last year, I did it by the number of students in each building. This year, I just split it in half and put $200,000 at the high school and $200,000 for the social studies adoption. But otherwise, it's, it's the same, same list, and the same staff, 91.4 for moving into next year. So here's the detail of the middle school. Again, I think the, the thing that jumps off the page for me here is that, you know, we're staying FTE neutral, but as far as personnel are concerned, we're pretty well-resourced. We have math literacy, we have an after-middle school, we have library, media specialists at the middle school, instructional technology teacher, you know, a lot of those related service providers in addition to the regular ed classroom teachers in each grade level. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions on this, but the, the big slide here is that the enrollment is going up a bit next year. And, and Mr. Beatty will acknowledge the fact that he's going to have more students next year, and he's going to do that with the same staff, which we all appreciate. And I think that's part of the belt tightening too, that's not always appreciated or understood. I know he can't hear me, but that's okay. I'll tell him later.
I feel a stare now.
But he's accepting, I don't know exactly how many more students, but, you know, quite 25,000 students with the same staff.
Yeah, so that increase, sort of that upward trajectory bubble is hitting middle schools now.
Can, can you talk about the combination, I'm going to talk louder so we can hear, it's going to come to you probably. Can you talk about the combination of the, is it 4.4 school counselors or 4.0? I can't read that FTE.
Right, very good to hear.
And then one school psychologist, because if I remember correctly, each elementary school has a psychologist. So I'm trying to figure out how a middle school with way more students and probably, I mean, they have middle school angst. I'm just wondering, what, what's the, what's the rationale for that sort of combination?
I can speak to the school counselor.
Okay.
In terms of school counselor, there's, there's actually a full-time person. There are 4 at Gates and 4 at Jenkins, and they support the special education program at Jenkins as well. So it's just a person split between two buildings.
Got it.
In terms of only having one site for a middle school that size, I'd certainly ask Dr. Bopert if she wants to say any words about that, but
He's asking if you want to say anything about that.
I mean, we have a wonderful psychologist, and she's, there was one year when there was a lot of evaluations. We were able to contract with private psychologists to pick that up. School psychologists are all really good, they help each other out if any one school gets swamped at any time. So I think it's okay.
Yeah. Just, it wasn't accusatory, it was just a question with the larger building, just wondering about workload for one individual.
Right. The other, the other piece is in situ with the model for the psychologist is we do half testing and half counseling.
Okay.
And given that we have four counselors at the middle school, those counselors can pick that up.
Okay.
So it's more of a testing. The psychologist does do some counseling as well, but it seems to be manageable right now.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
You should do much better than that.
Yeah. Of course. Yeah. That's why I wanted to ask. Yeah.
They help one another out, and we do have funds available in the special education district budget for the contracting service. So when it does get up and down, we can handle it.
Yeah.
And again, similarly for Gates, a lot of up and down, I think the main story here, and it's hard to see, but we did take the money from the mathematics text I think the main story here, and it's hard to see, but we did take the money from the mathematics text line and we moved it into the social studies text line. And so that's really our commitment to making sure that we have that funding available for new curriculum. That's a big deal. I think it goes unsaid in a lot of other school systems. Every year, you're always finding how are you going to do a new curriculum adoption? How are you going to find the money? It's usually around $400,000 to $500,000 to do that, no matter what the grade level is or what the subject area is. Because we have that funding available and can move from one department to the next from year to year on our curriculum revision cycle. And we work really hard to maintain that. That's huge. It allows us to have a curriculum review cycle. And we're not going into town to support that with capital money or anything like that. It's embedded into our budget from year to year. I haven't seen that too many places. And it has made it so much easier to commit to that curriculum review cycle. Social studies knows next year's its year. English knows its year after that. You know, coming into this year, math new, if this was their year, that lets everybody plan ahead and also know that it's coming and they can plan for their year when that happens. I know we're doing a lot of work in terms of, you know, how that looks, all of that. But the funding's available, and that's a key reason.
I guess I'm wondering, I know we're going to talk about MTSS and the dashboard leader. But I think in a similar vein, so I'm just wondering, we've just done this big revision of math. When will, where in the budget does it create space for our teachers to sort of do a postmortem of this year? I mean, I know they're doing some just in time because they've shared with us. But like, I'm thinking about we have, we're always doing a curriculum cycle. So what, where in the budget do they have that collabor, I guess it's the collaborative time to say this is what worked? And I'm just wondering.
It would be in the curriculum revisions line, but not explicitly stated. So there, you know, there's, when you get to, when we get to it, I think there's over $50,000 now in that curriculum vision line. Or I think I put in the notes, social studies as well as any additional math work.
Oh, so that's not in the math line?
No.
It's actually a different, I was like, there's a long time right in there.
This is literally buy the texts. And here, it's for math, it's only to buy any replacement text. So that she might be, you know, just a little edgus kind of.
Got it.
The curriculum work for the postmortem we're looking at, is in the curriculum lines.
Okay.
And specifically in the curriculum revision line.
And that will be for collaborative time or however the teachers think they need to be using that time to do a postmortem. Okay.
But it's not specifically stated.
Okay.
But it's there.
Okay.
I think that curriculum review psycho plan can't be, you know, we can't kind of double down on that enough. Just each of us here coming in, that was not in place. Most of us in the room, actually, that's something that's been newly developed. And it's so incredibly impactful just across the board, like you said, teachers, planning, department chairs, principals, everybody. Even as a parent, I find it interesting that, you know, knowing that, you know, this year's social study or coming up with social studies and then English has got following that. It just, it's peace of mind and it kind of is ensuring that there isn't a ball dropped in terms of, you know, how that looks 10 years out. And so it just feels like a smart investment and just a piece of the budget that maybe was missing, you know, 10 years ago. And that got us into some holes that we climbed out of strategically, you know, thanks to leadership and all the hard work of everyone here and the teachers. But, you know, it's been a climb and it continues to be. And I think once we get through a full cycle of everything, we turn back to, you know, the first one, then we'll see that pattern forming. So I think it's really, can't be understated here how big that is for us.
Yeah, thank you for that. And that's new to us. I go back a few years to the, yesterday morning, we purchased a reading program. Remember, district couldn't have a reading program for years and years and years for a curriculum cycle. So textbooks were 25 years old, still are. So we're doing that. So we're going to work on too. And I think we started a little bit this year and last year, but also just the example of Ms. Lesniak coming up and sharing, you know, some of the rationale and how we thought process behind the purchases. But that return on investment we're talking about, we'll continue to do that when we come up with our presentations is, okay, this is part of the process so that it's not just now. And I think we're doing a pretty good now explaining it. But I think even the, you know, considering the general public and the parents out there, they're just saying, well, they spent 500 grand on textbooks. That's not what we did. It's a lot more than that. So I think the communication piece of that, you'll see, to continue and be embedded in our presentations as we move forward, starting with the last few cycles, which were math, before that, social studies this year, so that we keep you apprised on where that money's being spent, professional development, resources, and how it connects to student.
Thanks. Yeah, I feel like maybe this is a good time, we could talk about it. I know you have more to do, Tom. But Maria and I went to a webinar last Friday and it was about data. And the woman, she was amazing. She did a presentation and talked about Open Architect, which I think is what you're using for MTSS, the dashboard. And so what it made Maria and I think about is, you know, are we, I think we do have a data manager or data somebody who's, this woman talked about that position as really being a support to central office, to the teachers, that the teachers aren't the ones that have to be grabbing all the data, but that data person is collecting the trends and handing it to the teachers. And so I think, you know, I'm sitting here listing new reading curriculum, math curriculum, wind blocks, the Lit program, Character Strong, one-to-one Chromebooks, new technology apps, interactive panels that you mentioned. We have all these wonderful things that we're doing. And I think for me, what's missing, and I went back and looked at our school committee goals from two years ago. We've been asking for data and ROI every year. And this year, we've got a subcommittee. And so I guess I would just love to see more data and more ROI. And I appreciate all the presentations that the staff do. But I really think for some of these things, we need to connect the dots better. And I know it's hard because there's 100 variables, 1,000 variables. But for us to be able to say, you know, we implemented Character Strong here and now we're starting to see this and these are the trends that we're seeing. Or, you know, we started using panels and moving from this to panels, I'm seeing the kids more engaged or whatever the stories are. I just think it would be in a year where we're tightened belts. We have a political, you know, we have a political situation where we're being questioned about everything. The more evidence we can bring to the amazing work we're doing, the better off we are as a committee and a school district. I mean, we're doing awesome things. I just want to highlight it. I want to tell the stories. So I just want to see that, that Open Architect dashboard more present. I don't know what my colleagues think about that.
Yeah, I would let Ryan.
Yeah, yeah, please.
We've had a meeting with them. And I've worked with Seth before from Open Architects. We, I agree, I would just want to acknowledge too, all of the groundwork that needs to be in place that that's happened here, to have benchmark assessments in place like Dibbles, the universal screener, STAR. All of that stuff needs to be in place. You could, I'm not saying that you said this, but you could buy Open Architects and have nothing to plug into it. And it's all the work that happens at the classroom level, system assessment. So I think we're in a very good position to be able to, you know, work with people like Steve DePrest, to collect the data. And yes, we want to use it in central office, but most importantly is also to make it easy for teachers who with one prep a day, like barely have enough time to like use the bathroom and eat lunch. And never mind, we want them to be able to look at data that's going to help them help kids. So I think we all agree and we're excited to, that the work that was done with S3 put us on the pathway to receive the DESI support this year to get started with Open Architects at no cost. And then next year, it's built into the budget. So I think stars are aligning. We all share the, you know, the urgency. And like I said, we're talking to them or we're meeting internally to talk about the data sources Thursday for them that they're requesting. But I'm just putting my hand on the work that's been done to get to the point where we have things to share with them. So we're equally, equally excited.
Yeah, and just for the record, like there was no criticism on my part. I think the teachers are doing amazing to be able to bring the benchmarks they are. Just I would like to give them more support to make it as easy as possible so they can focus on educating our students, right?
Yeah, 100%. And I think it's a, it's a problem across education where like we love Aspen and it, you know, it houses all of our student data, but it doesn't, it's not a learning management platform. You have to use Google Classroom. And it doesn't, it's not a data visualizer for anybody. So all districts have had to go out and find, you know, things like Tableau or like Salesforce data, like platforms that integrate data. And so where, just like every other industry, and finding something that can do that so that the time that kids and teachers spend on assessment can be actionable. So I just think it's, we're at that inflection point. And it's a, it's a real need that you put your, you know, you've identified. And I think teachers share that same frustration where, oh, I have to go into Star Reading and find that report. Or where's the Dibbles report? Oh, that's a different platform. And so we're excited to hopefully make it easier for everybody. And we agree that there's a lot of data and we just want to be able to use it.
Ultimately, that just drives good outcomes for students, which is exactly why everyone's here. I mean, there was, I forget which district it was, but there was just a, an article that I read and they, or I think it was a school committee meeting in another district, that they had, a school committee member had asked about student outcomes because they had seen really strong improvements in scores. And they attributed it to MTSS specifically. It could kind of follow that right back to that system. And having everything in one place, being able to know what, you know, that, that individual child needed and working on each individual student kind of drove up the scores. So I do know what district it is, but I won't say the H word here.
I would just echo the support for this. I was curious, are we still doing some cost sharing on the dashboard this year in this budget? Or is that the full cost of the data dashboard?
The $16,000 next year is the full costs quoted from Open Architects for FY '26.
Okay.
The efforts happening now to get our system set up is being funded by a grant. So we're not paying, we're not paying anything until FY '26. But we're getting all the services in '25 to get started. And that's basically being funded by DESI, S3, and like the RENI Center partnership.
And over time, is it the building of the, of the system, the dashboard, that's expensive? Or is that an ongoing cost that we'll then see? Like is there, I'm assuming there's maybe some always to be putting data in, right? And then I guess I'm just curious how that cost might shift over time.
Yeah, I've worked with another platform that's owned by Renaissance. It was significantly more expensive than Open Architects. For a subscription, $16,000 is, let me say, we spend a lot more on other subscriptions. So, but I think another part of it though is the time that teachers need to use data, the schedule that it takes to, to run MTSS. And I think those aren't in the $16,000. But as we think about the middle school and what's happening at Jenkins, there's a lot of structural enhancements that occur that may need to be considered. So I, I think it's, I agree.
Okay, that's helpful. I just was thinking 16K is not very expensive for such, you know, I think it seems like it would be more expensive. And I agree with you too on some of the ancillary costs. And, you know, making sure that we can prioritize that so that you guys do have the time that you need to actually use it and use it well. You know, that's the whole key, obviously, so.
So our final building, the high school, again, I just think it's important to show our commitment to instruction, the fact that it's the same number of FTEs from one year to the next. But, you know, 62 regular ed, 11 special education. We have a strong high school with strong curriculum. And I know we just talked about the program of studies. So all of that is embedded with this staff. And, you know, the one thing I asked Mr. Larranger when he was putting the program of studies together, I said, you know, the program of studies are doing that with the same number of FTEs you have now. And he said, yes, that's huge. You know, so he's keeping the program of studies modern. He's keeping the program of studies 20 per century, but at the same time respecting the number of FTEs that counts. And that's huge. I couldn't do Mr. Beatty a shout out, though.
They can't hear you anyway.
He can't hear me.
I think they hear you a little.
They'll go on the watch.
So again, similar to the middle school, you know, committed to all the areas that we need to support that program of studies. And we have strong, strong core programs as well as strong electric programs. And they're all represented here. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but this is very similar to the middle school in terms of what we have.
I have a question generally, I guess, on, I'll say on the math. Sorry. Just trying to follow, just trying to follow, you know, the path of a student and kind of how they're supported. So this goes back to elementary. I know that each elementary school has a math specialist, okay? Which I think is good. And then at the middle school, there's two math literacy positions. Are those essentially the same thing? Are those supporting special ed students or just students that need a little bit of extra help? And then as I look into the high school, there's none of that. Just trying to figure out kind of why that is and, and, and maybe there's a better way to do it or maybe this is working, but I think that as we experience our math performance isn't that great. So I think this is maybe somewhere that we look to say, well, you know, are we putting the resources in the right place? And is this the right structure? I just don't know. I don't know the difference between a mathematics specialist and a math literacy position. And then there's nothing at the high school. So I'm just trying to figure out the difference. And I probably should have asked that at the Celebrate Student Learning, but I'm seeing it visually here.
Certainly on the list, Heather and Tara can certainly put a finer point on that. But I think that the terms are just semantics. They're both math specialists. The math literacy position for middle school is funded by Title I as well as the budgets. So we have a little bit of funding from Title I as well as the, the operating budget for that.
There's a question about math support, the elementary level and the middle school level. So I think Heather's be helpful, Tara, and also Mr. Beatty, talk a little bit about what the difference, how students are supported with math at the middle school and also the elementary level. Specifically, what's a math specialist do versus math literacy at the middle school? And then why does the math position exist at the high school?
Why is it? Yeah, I'll start with elementary. Math specialists work with our, they run our win groups. So at the elementary level, math specialists work, run our win groups. That's sort of when they get to ground running, they're looking at benchmark data, they're running their groups. But they're also the ones who are the first line of defense with the data. They're looking at benchmark data, they're organizing it, they're putting groups together, they're running data meetings. They're sharing the data with principals. They're sort of the ones that are constantly checking on it and checking with teachers. And they're on top of it. So they have sort of a hybrid role in which they're coaching, they're coaching the other teachers, but also running win groups. So I say that their role is, has two parts to it. Does that make sense?
Are they focusing on, would any of it be special ed or no? Are those different category students?
No, not at the elementary level. If they have, if students have an IED, then special educators will be supporting them. The win groups are for general ed kids who just need that.
Okay.
It's not to say that if you were in a win group and you're still struggling, then they may go through that process. But they're not, they're not touched with.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Middle school math literacy.
It was, it was more of a question of, so I'm trying to follow the progress of math throughout Central Public Schools. And it starts with math specialist at the elementary school. And then I guess math specialist at the middle school, and then it stops when we get to high school. Trying to figure out why, why it stops at the high school. Because we're not performing very well.
And what are they doing at the middle school?
Yeah, what they're doing at the middle school, they should not be doing at the high school or vice versa.
So the middle school is very similar to the elementary schools. We take our benchmark data, we set up groups. We, it's a little different because we have sort of a tier two, tier three support system. So we have sort of two different areas in which we can support students at the middle school. And then some of our middle school specialists also push into some of the classrooms as well. They are not really in a coach, that is sort of a difference between them. They're not in a coaching role. They're really there to support the students and help bridge the gaps between some of the difficulties they have in some of the math concepts. And then in the high school, we have the win groups too. And it's sort of on the individual teachers to sort of bridge those gaps in that time period there.
Okay.
So I don't know if that answered your question, Peter. Does that help?
No, it does. I'm just trying to go back to one, to the math presentation. I know that we were working on improving our assessments and performance. And I didn't know if one of these models worked better than the other and if we should be adjusting them. I don't know the answer to that. I just, I was visually finally seeing it now that we don't have, you know, we have the wind block at the high school, but it's not an additional position or whatnot. That's all.
That's all. Can you speak to the evolution, Mr. Beatty?
Sure. So our model has changed at the middle school over the last three years with our math specialists. Uh, our math specialists used to be used as co-teachers in the math classroom. Uh, we have since kind of looked at the data and said, students not only need additional support within the math classroom setting, but also need some pullout support as well. And so we have two different models, um, existing at the middle school right now. We have a pullout once a week where small groups of students get additional support in grade level content. And then we have a specific class that students who need additional kind of foundational supports, um, they are getting in an additional class. Um, and so I think the difference between elementary and the middle school, they're very similar. Um, as we are kind of moving towards a wind block, I would see our math specialists running groups uh, in addition to what they're currently running. Uh, but this is for supporting kind of all students in the classroom, but then specifically students who are not on IEDs, um, or providing supports outside of the classroom, like very targeted supports in small groups.
Okay.
And that, uh, I guess does not, or relates to the high school and in some ways, high school students, high school.
Middle, middle schools. Yeah, they do. Middle school has, students have win, right?
Uh, next year, all students will have win.
Okay.
Yes, all students will have win.
They don't have it?
Oh, okay.
There is like a period where they, you have those special.
Enrichment.
Enrichment, that's what I'm saying.
Sure, we have, we have an enrichment block right now. Um, and some students are getting that support from the math specialist. Then next year, one hundred percent of students at Gates will have a win block. Um, and will have opportunities to get extra support. So it's going to look less like a directed study hall and more like targeted support.
Fantastic.
Yes.
And when did you switch over up to that in classroom to like?
Um, I want to say last year was the first year, it was last year where we did a pullout model for those that needed more than just the, um, push in model. And let's say we've seen those students that are getting that pullout support, um, we're seeing results that we want to see. It comes at the expense of, you know, for every added support you need to put into the school day, you're taking something away from a child. But at the same time, um, this is the time to build those foundational skills that exist because the gap just continues to widen if you don't target that.
So I think maybe what you're asking is at the high school, that pullout doesn't occur. But what does occur is like different levels of classes, right? Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, I would say the wind block at that high school is more, it, it isn't as targeted, no. It's not quite that way. It's more up to the individual teacher can target, you know what I mean? And say, hey, I need you to come in and get the supports that you need. Uh, or the student can recognize it itself, but it's not quite set up the same exact way, um, as it is at the middle school currently.
A little bit more students are expected to advocate for support during win.
Yeah.
At that school. Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're actually in the process too of redoing wind block or taking a look at changing our wind block for, so that it's more supportive as well. We started second semester, we're looking at revamping it more next year. And, you know, and the mass supports would be more utilized with, with the new format for sure. You'd make bigger block of time.
Thank you.
I did break up high school experiences to two pages, just simply for ease of reference. But again, a very similar kind of thing. Um, art, if you look on the third line there, I think this is a great example of, of collaboration among the different departments. You know, to make things work. In architects, you know, there was twenty five thousand dollars each for the last two years to buy iPads that they needed and different things. Well, they funded those and so we don't need that twenty five thousand dollars in that line anymore. And I think that is the kind of collaboration among the department heads that lets everything work from year to year. It just speaks to that cooperation and cultural cooperation. Um, but again, you'll see the adjustment for, um, for math and social studies later on. And again, the building admin replace equipment, I had to bring that back down to fifteen thousand dollars. That was a one-shot deal this year to do some of the work we did with the cafeteria floor, the foyer out front here. We did a lot of work in the gym, replaced the, um, basketball hoops in the gym as well as the pads in the gym. And the foyer, we put some new matting and so forth. So some, some light upgrades here at the high school, LED lighting. Uh, but that wasn't something that we could sustain from one year to the next. And this is jumping ahead very fast. Okay, and this is the rest of the high school. Again, high school has a lot of different programs, but it's the same core. Uh, but we just add the music and the drama and, and different areas here. But you can see, uh, the same commitment to making sure that the high school is well-funded and that the social studies curriculum is being funded for next year as well. So that is all of the buildings, so all six buildings. And it's broken out pretty significantly in the lines both for expenses and salaries. And now we get to some of the district expenses that were on that summary page earlier. Again, no new staff, but when you look at special, special education district salaries, um, the reason I didn't put the difference on there was again to preserve the negotiating ability of the school committee. There are students that have on that list. And so again, just to, to allow us that flexibility as a committee. Um, but again, as I mentioned last week, we have three BCBA's, board certified behavioral analysts here in Situate. And that's strong for a building, for a school system this size. And it allows the support for programs such as GEMS and the specialized program at Athalie, specialized programs here at the middle school and the high school as well. Um, we have a staff physical therapist as well as the occupational therapist, three occupational therapists. So all of those things are part of the related services that help our special education teachers in preventing that use of our students. And then we have an elementary and a secondary change chair as well as an add district coordinator. You might remember last year, we moved that position from point seven to one point oh. And we found that very successful to allow that as a full-time job. And then the expenses that go with special education. Again, as I mentioned last week, this special education tuition saw an increase of about four hundred thousand dollars from last year with fewer students. And so we did see two years ago, a big spike, a fourteen percent spike in our special education added district expenses. Um, that's leveled off a bit, but they still are climbing. And so we were able to adjust for that, even with the bell tightening. We were able to adjust for that in next year's budget and, and make sure that we have it. As I did mention at the last meeting, there is a special education reserve fund at the town side. Apparently I don't believe has any money in it or very little. Um, but it's something that future town meetings, not this spring, but future town meeting could add to, to hedge against volatile special education expenses in the future. Nothing that we're asking for at this April. So again, I'm keeping aside from the tuitions, I kept these lines pretty flat. Um, I was able to adjust the drivers, believe it or not, for the special education drivers. I had overstated that line last year, not quite knowing in my first year what we would be doing for those. So, um, we're in, we're in, we're in pretty good shape for our special education district expenses. And they're summarized at the bottom in terms of transportation, OOD and then supervising services. Again, central administration salaries, the same staff moving from, uh, twenty five to twenty six. And those are all the different, um, salaries that support us. Now again, those aren't all on the operating budget. As I mentioned, the Medco positions are on the Medco budget. The director of food services is on the food services budget. Um, but all in, these are the people that support all of our teachers and administrators. And this is the central administration line I talked about earlier. Um, if you look about a third way down the page, you'll see central administration contracted services. Um, even though I have money in there for consultant for communications, um, there, we were able to sustain a little bit of a hit in that line. Uh, but we can still get what we need in terms of X two and school spring and the different consultants that we need to run the district. I corrected student activities, dated twelve, that line was overstated last year and allowed me an opportunity to make a correction. Um, and we talked about earlier, I did add forty thousand to contracted services needing to account for uh, when we need commercial boiler systems to come out here. The, the one thing that I think is critical, just like we talked about having that nugget of money for curriculum, we've also been able to sustain that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for building maintenance from year to year. And you'll notice the actuals in FY twenty four were actually four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We do what we need to do to maintain our buildings. Um, and it is fantastic to have that money. I mean, a real case in point, last Wednesday, the two boilers at the middle school didn't take on. It was a cold day, if you remember that. And, you know, we, commercial boiler, I was able to say, come right out here. They came out here, they diagnosed the problem, they recognized that it was a controller that needed to be replaced. Six thousand dollar fix, you know, a lot of money. But again, you have to, and so I don't have to worry about approving those kinds of things. You know, in other districts I've been in, you've lived along, you know, somebody can turn it on and off manually every morning. Yeah, okay, sure. But, you know, it, it's not the way it works in the real world. Um, I also found out that central offices heat is controlled by the middle school boilers as well. I didn't know that until last week. So that gave me a little level of urgency. Regardless, it, it, those kinds of things happen all the time. You know, little fixes here and there that are generally less than ten thousand dollars. But if you don't do it and you let them pile up, they become bigger problems down the road. Having that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget has allowed us to forestall a lot of those issues that you hear about at other schools. And not only to maintain the comfort of the staff and the comfort of the students, but also to keep the buildings running. Um, and even a relatively new building at the middle school, it's still almost seven or eight years old and things are going to start to break and we need to be aware of those. So again, not too many changes there. Um, I kept most of those lines the same, but highlighted some of the changes. Uh, and then we talked about, we talked about earlier technology. So not only are four technology persons, but we do have somebody who works part-time for a pack, a music accompanist that helps out with music. That was just in the technology budget years ago. I probably could put it somewhere else, but it just happens to be there for one year, the next. Um, and then the tech staff, we talked earlier about the new elementary course communicator and what a great job he's doing. And Tara, I had moved up to work with us here in central office in the high school with the tech team. And, um, that, as we mentioned earlier, the tech staff this year has done a phenomenal job. Um, coordinating things, getting things done, recognizing issues. Um, later on, we'll talk a little bit about cybersecurity and some of the needs of the market. Uh, so, so here we go, the technology expenses. So I consolidated these, um, but you'll see over, and in your budget books, you have each of these laid out for you. But from twenty three to twenty six, we've been almost tripled our technology budget. And we had a reliance on town articles from year to year for technology, which is why you can get away with only ninety seven thousand dollars in FY twenty three. But that's not sustainable long-term. You need to be able to fund technology just like you fund gas and electricity, like we talked about earlier. Um, so I was able to add a nominal increase of twenty eight thousand dollars in technology because of two other funding sources. We have a four hundred thousand dollar article right now, this year to replace all the switches. We did that. And at the end of the day, because of E-rate funding, we'll still have enough money left over to buy all the Chromebooks for fifth and ninth grade next year. So that's something we'll have to incorporate. That's about a hundred and fifty thousand we'll have to incorporate into next year's budget. Um, and we also have an additional amount of E-rate funding coming in next year to help with some of those bigger cybersecurity up fixes that we're looking to do. But again, as we go into twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, we're going to be looking at more investment in technology as well. So I don't have much more to say about technology other than Pat, if there's any particular questions, I know Jack is behind me.
I just have a question about the Chromebooks. When we take the old Chromebook, what happens to that? Like, is it refurbished? Do we use it again at some point?
It depends on what kind of shape it's in.
Well, yeah.
So, okay, so I mean, they, ultimately they can be recycled. But if we can, if we can use it for parts, use it for the screen, use it for different parts, we'll do that. You know, so they'll take the cover off, they'll take the screen off, they'll use it for different parts. If it's in good enough shape, we'll use it for a loaner Chromebook as well. So I know, um, in the middle school office, they have a pile of loan book, loaner Chromebooks similar to here at the high school library. Um, and that's what they are, is ones that have been turned. Um, so any number of different ways we can use them.
Can I ask a question? Um, you had mentioned, when you did the central office, I missed it. So you had mentioned earlier that when with the fight, the fight, the belt tightening, sorry, the fight, the belt tightening, that your teachers that wanted to keep the same budget, you had like research upon research and they were bringing you rationals for that. And it reminded me because you, thank, thank you, Mr. Adams, for everyone, for the update on what the, what DEI supply means. Because it's clear, what I'm wondering is, um, and maybe I should just ask Mr. Adams, at some point, could you, um, give us an updated? Because this looks like it's from last year and it would be awesome to hear what's happening this year, twenty four, twenty five, just so we have some, you know, evidence of what's happening. And I would just love to hear, there's a lot that's happened over the years, so it'd be great to see an update on that.
Absolutely. I can, next week I can provide actual.
Okay, thanks.
And then transportation. So again, I kept that pretty flat, uh, just to provide the committee funding to successfully negotiate with the drivers. But other than that, we've kept that, those numbers flat, uh, for the same reasons I mentioned earlier. But, uh, we have really been able to minimize our costs because we do run our own transportation. So I'll stop sharing at this point so that we can all look at one another and then, any other further questions?
I have a question. Just about the buses, uh, this kind of a general question, because we have cameras in our buses, correct?
Inside, yes.
Inside buses. So there was recently legislation passed about cameras in the buses or the outside?
You'd have to install them outside. So.
To catch the people.
Exactly. So there's a whole, we actually did a little bit of research about this. We had, we had an email a couple of weeks ago. And while the law is wonderful on the surface, there is a lot of information that we'd have to buy. So we'd have to not only install exterior cameras, but we really have to figure out how they're going to be used. Um, the extent that they're going to be used, what kind of, uh, you know, um, memory they would have on them and how that would interact with the police department. And that also requires a presentation to annual town meeting, believe it or not, where they have to adopt the law formally. So there were a lot of pieces to that that I frankly wasn't prepared to unpack and I'm not going to add. So, um, so while I'm certainly supportive of making sure people stop for the buses, and I think down the road, it's something that we're going to have to implement.
At our expense.
At our expense, of course. And it might need some time to kind of figure that out. What does that look like? Um, just to talk to the police chief about it, we haven't even had those conversations. So, um, you know, I'm not against the new law, I just want to take it slow, if that makes sense.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I think it's really, I think Superintendent Burke had said in his opening statement, something to get back to. We talked about it last week at the first glance at the budget, just about how, can't kind of boast about this enough, that, that the really smart budgeting that's been done in Situate and really smart investment in curriculum and student outcomes that we're really, you know, continuing to refine. Um, that we are unlike other towns who are looking for money from residents and increasing fees for students to the two million thousands even on families that were not in that position. So, uh, appreciate this budget and all the hard work that's gone into it very much.
I, I guess I would also add, I think, I agree a hundred percent. I, so Tom, I feel like you've been here longer than, when you said this, your second year, I feel like you've been here a long time. You have such a good process.
This is very fun, like.
Yeah. No, he's, he's his own, he's his own guy, so.
It's like that scene, like.
Yeah.
You trust that you know you're not.
Absolutely, yeah, for sure. I felt that last year too. But I think I just, Peter, I just appreciated your question around sort of looking across the schools with, in terms of math support. And I do think as much progress as we're making, it's a yes and for me, as much progress as we're making, there's still some riddles that we need to figure out, which is, you know, back to Peter's question. Like, what is the right combination of support in math, right? Is, is it wind blocks? Is it something else? And, you know, I, I know I said this last time and it's a soapbox, I apologize. But like every year we don't figure it out, it's another group of kids that are getting by without the supports, you know? Ryan, you said we're going to change, we're going to add a wind block. And I'm like, ah, missed a year, you know? You know, and I know it's always going to be the case when new things happen, but like the faster we can figure out these. And so I just want to make sure our teachers and our leaders have the things they need to, to riddle these out and figure it out. Because these are real kids sitting in, in, in real teachers' classrooms and. and it's like real, you know, real things happening, not just a number on a sheet, right? These are people. So I know that they all know that, I don't mean to say that, but I just, as much progress as we made, I feel like we can't stop, we need to keep moving. And I'm going to keep saying data and data and dashboards until I see it. So that's just, that's just my thing.
I wholeheartedly agree.
Yeah, so I'll stop now.
All right, any other questions or final inputs or feedbacks?
So we, this is effectively our second look at the budget, so we hopefully voted, is it next Monday?
Yeah, next Monday.
And then you guys go to present it to everyone, so I would advise, or then tell me. Assuming we approve it next Monday. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, all right. If no more questions are on the table here from the committee, we'll proceed and open up public comment. Not having anyone in person, I'll just direct my attentions right to the virtual folks. If anyone has a comment, please feel free to raise your hand. Okay, looks like nobody's raising, so that being said, I will take a motion to adjourn here tonight.
Motion to adjourn at seven fifty-two.
Second.
All in favor?